Welcome, everybody. I am Marissa Elkins, Chair of the City Council Legislative Matters Committee. And I have let you introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Chris Tate, the Vice Chair of the Northampton Planning Board.
And we are calling to order the joint meeting of Legislative Matters Committee and Planning Board. So if we could have a meeting called order and roll call for each body.
Okay, Counselor Elkins.
Here.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor Perry.
Here.
And then we know Counselor Mayory is absent.
And shall I call the roll for the Planning Board? Sam?
Here.
Chris? Here. Stacy? George?
Here.
And Cameron?
Here.
Welcome, welcome to the Planning Board.
Yeah. Same here.
Very. There you go. And we have form for each body, correct?
Yes.
All right, very good. Um, we, first item on our agenda, so I would note that tonight's, this hearing is being audio and video recorded. And the Legislative Matters already met at 6 o'clock, had a public comment period. I believe Planning Board has on their agenda for their business after this hearing, additional public comment time, I think. And, and so there's not a separate public comment time for this period. But even if there were, we would be asking anybody who wishes to speak to the hearing item, the agenda item that is the hearing, to wait to speak during the hearing. So with that said, we are, we have tonight on the agenda, a public hearing on item 25, 251, petition to amend Chapter 350.4 zoning map to rezone parts of CB side to urban residential, CB, Central Business Side District to Urban Residential Core since.
C.
C, okay, to URC. And that was referred to the Planning Board and Legislative Matters by City Council, May 21st, 2025. This legislation comes to us by way of resident petition, which was submitted to the Clerk's Office on May 10th. So with that, if, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I will move to open the public hearing.
Second.
And all the, nobody is attending by Zoom, so all in favor from Legislative Matters, open the hearing?
Aye. And Planning Board doesn't typically make motions to open the hearing, but in honor of this occasion, let's do it.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
All in favor? Motion passes.
Very good. Um, okay, so we have before us tonight, and we will be putting some, you know, the relevant sort of maps and so forth on the, on the screens. I want to go ahead and, before we get started, lay out how I want to conduct the hearing today. So what we're gonna, what I'm asking is that the petitioners, represented by one designated person, the property owner or the representative, and the Planning Department will each have equal time to present their respective positions on the proposed legislation. I have determined that time to be five minutes. I've not heard from any person presenting for any of the parties that, or the, the relevant folks, that they need more time, so we will be going with five minutes. I know who's here for the property owner and Director Mish, I assume you'll be speaking for the Planning Department? And do we know who's speaking for the petitioners?
It's supposed to be Dan.
Okay.
Maybe he's on Zoom.
He is on Zoom, okay.
Okay.
I see his hand up, all right, very good. Following the presentations, we will hear from the public. Folks will have three minutes to comment on the legislation and to ask questions. I've asked Counselor Jarrett, Alex, to keep time. And can we get somebody to take notes of questions, ala Counselor Moulton from Finance? Too bad he's not here. But we will take notes of the questions that are raised. We will, during this, this public comment period, we won't be answering questions or getting into back and forth at that time. Following the presentations and hearing from the public, after everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, the deliberating bodies will have discussion and raise questions during this period of discussion. We'll address relevant questions raised by the public and the deliberating bodies to the people present best able to answer them. After the two bodies are satisfied that they have gathered enough information from the presentations and questions have been answered, we will close the public hearing. At that time, we will begin to deliberate on any proposed recommendations. The public does not participate in board and committee deliberations, and no one from the public will be recognized to speak during the deliberation, discussion and vote. And that, and for that, the record, that includes the Planning Department. This deliberation will be wholly internal with the Planning Board and the, and, and the Legislative Matters Committee. I will say to my colleagues that we, you know, so be mindful. And when we close this hearing, we're not going to be recognizing additional people. We're going to move through this deliberation and discussions and just to, to keep things fair and equal. The two bodies who will be considering the ordinance change will be, as you know, the Planning Board and the City Council Legislative Matters Committee. The, we are meeting jointly today, as we often do for these kinds of zoning changes, for the sake of efficiency, but each body will vote separately. The vote we will be taking, each body will be taking, will be for a recommendation back to the full council, either positive, negative, or neutral. It is, and each body will take its own vote. They can be different, they can be the same. It is, it is sometimes happens that, that a recommendation will be voted on that includes some additional language or recommendation, or sort of message to council for consideration. The Planning Board recommendation is merely advisory, and neither recommendation is binding on the full council, or even on the individual councils who are present here today. Votes can change between the committee meeting and the full council meeting. A note to all participating at this hearing, this hearing, these, this hearing pertains to the proposed zoning changes brought by the petitioners. As we are all aware, there is a proposed development that is the subject of ongoing litigation. That project is not the subject of the hearing tonight. While it is surely the case that the project may inform our thinking about this proposed legislation, I ask that people limit their remarks and questions to how the proposed changes would affect the city and neighborhood without assumptions about whether passage of this proposed zoning change would or would not affect that project. I encourage all to focus on what is persuasive, factual, and explanatory, and remind all that in addition to being kind and neighborly, that being civil is also persuasive. So with that said, I will begin with the petitioners. So Mr. Brandell, am I correct that, is it correct that you're, you're speaking for the petitioners?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, yep, yeah, I'll be speaking for the petitioners, and it's, it is possible to share a screen. You guys allowed me to do that?
Yes, of course.
Okay, cool. Yeah, well, I, if this is it, you know, I want to thank you guys for hearing this. I've been working to get this consideration since February, when me and my neighbors found out about the zoning changes. You know, I've discovered a lot since then, I've talked to you guys a lot since then. I know the public has really taken an interest since then. I know a lot of members of the public were interested and expected to speak today at 6:30. And yeah, I just want to thank all of them for tuning in and preparing statements and getting ready to speak. I know a lot of them are probably not going to be able to. We're, we're pushing into kids' bath time and bedtime, and you know, I appreciate that. So I just, I want to thank anybody that, that was able to jump on for a public comment, even if they're not able to make a comment. There's been a lot of interest in this, and I really appreciate it. So yeah, is, let's share this screen.
You're having, getting it?
No, I just, yeah, it wouldn't allow me for a second. Should be able to now.
Pause the time for the technical difficulties.
It's saying it, you have to, well, let me see if this works. Okay, yeah, that should do it. All right. All right, hi. Can everybody still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Cool, cool, cool. All right, yeah, I want to, um, what is this? Yeah, I want to thank you guys for tuning in. You know, we face existential crises in the country and in the city. We have an affordability crisis in housing, a climate crisis that's all around us, a city that is increasingly inaccessible and unaffordable, both to the people who want to move here and the folks who have lived here forever. We need policy and planning that meets this moment. We need our city government to use its power to require that any new land use serves the public and helps to preserve the planet. I think to a lot of us, that is a no-brainer. Housing needs and environmental concerns are very often presented as in conflict, and understandably so. Balancing those interests can be a complex and delicate dance. I believe deeply, after looking at this for many months, that the Urban Residential, or URC, regulations in this city that were developed and amended over time, tested in my neighborhood, this neighborhood, and others like it, do a pretty good job of responsibly serving these interests while carefully balancing these concerns. These are longstanding regulations and requirements, they're far from perfect, but they're also not nothing, and they're easily enacted. By taking today and in the future, the simple step of starting to return this parcel to the residential URC district that it borders and was always a part of until 2022, two years after it was purchased, we can reimpose widely agreed upon, common sense already on the books, tried and true regulations with protections and requirements that make life better for everyone, that serve our affordability needs, that serve our environmental needs, that protect the community, and even more than that, protect the residents who are going to move into this building or anything that is built on that lot. This is, see if I can get this open. Sorry about that, Zoom is really slowing down my computer. All right, so yeah. You know, a lot of people aren't aware, URC regulations and requirements, they require appropriate massing and height. There are construction regulations that minimize the impact to the neighborhood character. There are visual buffers that protect the butters from headlights, noise pollution, light pollution, actual pollution. There's a minimum of one parking space per unit required, which makes a lot of sense. In our city, more than 90% of households have at least one car, and anyone moving into this lot likely will. There are regulations that mitigate traffic, limit commercial use, limit carbon use, and, you know, a focus on carbon reduction. They require green space to the tune of 30%. And there are a lot of affordability controls built into it. 11% of units in a URC zone would have to be affordable, or else they are built small enough that it would be conceivable that they, that they would be affordable. And even beyond that, there are lots of protections to make sure that people who move into affordable housing still have all the access to amenities, to full internet, et cetera, et cetera, that the other residents have. This is good zoning regulation to serve our affordable housing needs. By contrast, the brand-new Central Business Side Street, or CBSS designation, strips all of these protections, disregards every single one of these considerations. There's no affordability requirement whatsoever, there's no green space requirements at all. There's maximal massing and footprint explicitly designed to maximize developer profits while staying just short of necessitating the more expensive, high-rise construction.
That is time.
I mean, is it okay if I keep on going? I've had a lot of technical stuff, I'm just trying to present the.
We did stop the clock for the technical difficulties, but is it, is it very much more? I'm, if it's a minimal, you know, if it's just a little bit more, I'm happy to let you continue.
Yeah, it's not, not that much more, I'm, well, more than halfway through.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was under the impression that we would have extra time if we needed. So yeah, CBSS, Central Business Side Street, has none of those requirements or protections for affordability, for environment. None of it. Zero parking spots required, no matter how high density the building is, that transfers up to, you know, 100 to 200 cars from a high-density building from parking lots that are carefully controlled and concealed by URC regulations, right out onto our public roads. We should be prioritizing getting cars off of our roads, not moving tons upon tons of them onto our roads permanently, which is what this CBSS zoning does. These are far fewer controls than even central business designation, which I think a lot of people don't understand. In 2025, with all the issues that we face and problems to be solved, we cannot afford radical deregulation, nor can we ignore the chance to impose meaningful controls on new construction that would solve our problems like affordability and environmental crises. The city is understandably interested in infill, it makes a ton of sense. However, when we increase a commercial district and expand it, when we lift regulations or newly zoned spaces, that's not infill, that's the opposite. That's what's called urban sprawl, and that is the thing that infill seeks to prevent. However, by making this CBSS, treating it as such, various other lots around the city will be doing the same. This is an expansion of our downtown at a time when we should be protecting our delicate communities and making sure that they are defined clearly. Furthermore, this parcel, which, you know, we've talked about at length, is on the official detour route for tractor trailers that can't make the clearance on Bridge Street. And here, this is a, this is Pomeroy Terrace, if you can see it. Even with our current URC limitation, because the entire neighborhood, the whole block, everything else is URC except for this parcel, even with those controls, this neighborhood, these roads are already densely parked to the point of not being able to move. You see on that video, those were parked cars. These are parked cars. So we are losing whole lanes in this neighborhood, and that's a real danger. And that's going to cause real infrastructural issues even without the added needs of a CBSS construction or development. The bottom line is, this is a very simple question. You can vote for affordability controls, you can vote for environmental controls, you can vote for neighborhood protections, you can vote for safety, security, and hopefully saving the city from some significant infrastructure costs. Or you can vote against that. And, you know, that is where we're at now. In 2022, I believe the majority of the people hearing this case right now voted to lift that URC regulation, strip all of those controls, and move to this deregulated Central Business Side Street zoning, which, this isn't even a Central Business Side Street. It's a road, it's called Phillips Place, the whole thing is, is zoned residential. I would encourage you guys to, you know, vote with your hearts and your conscience and serve the people of Northampton. We need more affordable housing, we need more environmental protections. We don't need to be doing the exact opposite of that, driving up rents and ripping down trees and destroying green space and lifting any regulations that would cause business interests to serve those. That's, that's all that really needs to be said. It's a very simple question, and I hope you guys make the, the right decision on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brandell. And.
Total time is nine minutes.
Thank you, that was a question. So with that in mind, we will, uh, folks who are speaking, I'll give each of you that much time if you need it. So, uh, who do we have here for the property owner?
Is, is your light green?
No.
Sorry, folks.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? All right, thank you for being here tonight. I know I've seen most of you before. My name's Sarah Stein, I'm the President of O'Connell Development Group. Our office is in Holyoke. O'Connell Holly II LLC is a fully owned subsidiary of O'Connell Development Group, and O'Connell Holly II is the owner of the single lot in question tonight. As the property owner, we ask that the existing zoning, that's, which has been studied in 2011 and again in 2022, remain as it currently stands, Central Business Side Street. The parcel is currently a parking lot. It previously serviced the adjacent Catholic Church. It's 0.37 acres, approximately 16,000 square feet. As we've already talked about tonight, and folks are aware, earlier this year, we submitted a site plan and special permit application for a 51-unit apartment building at this location, which follows other work that we've done on Holly Street over the last five years. The lot was previously two separate parcels, 32A170, which is 0.21 acres, and parcel 32A197, which is 0.16 acres. Parcel 32A170, the larger of the two, is located directly at the corner of Phillips Place and Holly Street. It was changed to Central Business zoning in 2012 as part of a larger rezoning effort, which impacted five areas in the city, including seven lots along Holly Street. The parking lot was owned by the Catholic Diocese from 1956, until O'Connell Development Group purchased it, along with the rest of the vacant diocese property on Holly Street in March of 2020. At that time, the former church, the parish center, and the rectory had been vacant for 10 years, since the St. John Canius Parish was merged with the Sacred Heart Parish in April of 2010. The existing zoning has been studied by the city. I spent time reviewing the community outreach presentations from 2011, from 2020, from 2022. This zoning was thoughtful, and it was talked about. The 2012 change was in direct alignment with the City of Northampton Housing Needs Assessment and Strategic Housing Plan published in 2011. And the 2022 change was in alignment with the Sustainable Northampton Comprehensive Plan. Again, as the property owner of the single parcel, I ask that you do not change the current zoning. Thank you. Thank you. And if we could hear from the Planning Department.
View. Up in the upper right, not there, but if you move the cursor to the upper right, further, where the, of the screen? Yeah, see the view in the very far upper right corner? It appears only if you move there. There we, yeah, I couldn't find that, sorry.
All right, Director Mish.
Thanks. So I just, to provide a little background and history about the zoning, I think is, and how we got to this point, is going back to 2008, upon the adoption of the Sustainable Northampton Plan. There were committees put together that did lots of outreach about implementation strategies based on the policy sections of that plan. And to, I'm sorry, let me just, the first, so part of that was looking at downtown, how to encourage land use changes that would encourage housing. We, even going back then and prior to 2008, we had been building this housing crisis and needing to look at housing and creating opportunities for housing in different ways. And so the sort of broad-scale policy directive was to make and implement zoning changes that would be in accordance with that future land use map, which focuses development in, in and around downtown and around village centers. And to, and to that end, as I mentioned, a rezoning committee was formed. Many recommend, many zoning amendments came on the heels of the adoption of that plan. So one of those was looking at ways to both encourage economic development and housing, and to look at different parts of the Central Business District and look at where it made sense to expand those. At the same time, the Catholic Church was going through a retraction, I guess, of their properties, and there was a big concern that these big behemoth buildings around the city would not be able to be reused. And so it was very important for community members, the council, the mayor, to find creative regulatory solutions to enable those properties to be redeveloped. And at that time, then, sort of moving forward to 2012, is when there were Central Business District expansions. And we've had bits and pieces of expansions on the edge for the last 20 years, one, two, four parcels at a time to expand the Central Business District. So this was one of those, but in particular was targeted at the church buildings that, and the church holdings at this corner. So extending Central Business from Bridge Street down to Phillips. And at the time, it grabbed the two parcels on the east, north side of Phillips, and then, or I guess it was one parcel at that time, and then one of the, at the time, two parcels on the east side. It came pretty quickly apparent that that was, sort of, it didn't capture all the, that was necessary in order to help facilitate that development. It just created more impediments for redeveloping the whole parcel. And so at various times, there were conversations about rezoning the remaining portion of that church-owned property. While at the same time, there were a couple of different development scenarios that were presented. One of them fully went through the Planning Board process, but then in the, and failed to come to fruition. But built out that entire parcel on the east side of the property, and it was a mixed commercial residential project. The, moving forward, knowing that it made sense to then also add that second portion of the east side parcel to be consistent with Central Business. There was a proposal that was on the path to be submitted to council in 2018, but we pulled it back because that was the same time we were starting with this whole form-based code for both Florence Center and Central Business District downtown. And so we thought, instead of pushing this ahead, let's just wrap it into the entire conversation about the new form-based code, which actually created many more protections and design features to be, to create compatibility with other properties within the sort of core and districts of downtown and the surrounding areas. So the form-based code really transitioned the city from just mostly a use-based system to something that's really more about design, character, massing, and architectural integrity, essentially. So that was a four-year process, there were over 20 public meetings that went into that process. We hired a consultant, and we looked at both downtown and Florence Center. And in that process, put in additional parcels, wrapped those into the Central Business Zone during that time. And the purpose of that was really to, again, direct changes and improvements in accordance with the land use map, but use downtown more, and more densely developed areas to encourage higher-density residential and medium-density housing, and encourage infill. Also to create and preserve high-quality built environments. These are goals out of the updated Sustainable Northampton Plan that includes the resilience component. And with also an economic development goal to ensure. component, and with also an economic development goal to ensure that there was a vibrant downtown commercial and village center. So supporting infill that's in downtown and on its edges will, has a positive impact on the ability for business development in our downtown, so restaurants, entertainments, office use, and so forth. So that's what led us to the 22. Finally, this four-year process over multiple public comments and stakeholder meetings came to this buildup of adoption of the form-based code that then divided the Central Business District, instead of having one monolithic zone, into three sort of subzones. So we have a core, we have a side street, and we have a gateway, recognizing that each of those have a little bit of a different characteristic, even though it's our downtown sort of most dense, mixed-use areas, that there are some differential difference in characteristics in those areas. So this happens to be the Central Business Side Street District because it's reflective of the fact that it's not on Main, Pleasant, and King, but there's still some downtown characteristics on those side, on the side streets that help support downtown viability. So that was 2022, and we certainly have seen a few projects that have come in to build in accordance with those plans. I want to address some of the, the idea that this stripped requirements is actually not the case. The, there's no requirement for affordable housing in the URC District. If there is one special permit provision in the urban residential C District, that's if you build more than six units, then you need to accomplish multiple criteria as part of your project development. One of them is to build either small units or units that 11%, that are affordable, but there's not a mandate that you build affordable housing. And the difference is affordable housing is subsidized housing that's permanently protected for people who are income-limited, meeting or earning 80% or less of their median income. The small units are, were a strategy because we know we're missing this gap of what we're calling attainable housing. So I just want to identify just a few other, clarify and clear and identify some misrepresentations about what was cut. Yeah. The other thing is, we continue to have lighting standards that are effective across the entire city. It's not just a URC thing, it's for every development. There are tree protections across the whole city for, no matter where the development is, and there are also parking screening requirements and other measures that are, really are wholly relevant to, no matter what the development is, it depends on whether you trigger going through the planning board, and most projects do.
All right, very good. Thank you for keeping remarks concise and relevant and to point. So at this time, we will move to comments from the public. I would like to hear, I want to divide this up by folks who are here to speak in favor of the zoning proposal, and then we will move to hear from people who oppose it. And as I said before, we'll be limited to three minutes. You can use that time to make comment. You can also post questions. Just note that they won't be answered in this back and forth, but we will keep notes of that. So I don't, did we put the sheet, sheet out? If, if their signature, if anybody signed in, then.
Did we have someone who's taking notes?
There's one person. Anyone else on the phone?
I don't know if we decided who would take notes.
I mean, I'd love to be taking that for them, but they've tried to highlight.
Yeah, can you just highlight questions? Okay, that'd be great, thanks. Nobody could. I'm a terrible note taker.
I'll just be like, oh, my phone left it.
And the sign-up sheet is helpful to us, but it's, you know, everybody who wants to speak will get their opportunity. And as we do in city council, I will, I'll go back and forth between Zoom. If you are on Zoom, I think, based on the hands that I see, I think everybody's speaking in favor of the, that, but if you are wishing to speak in opposition to the zoning, please wait. I will call on, on those folks later to put your hands up when we get to that. So we'll start in the room with Harold Wolf.
That's on. Can you, can you hear me okay? I try to be as close to this as possible. Point of order here first, the questions that we want to ask, are they to the planning board and to the owner as well, or just to the planning board and council?
So my, what I'd like you to do is to pose the question, and we will, we'll talk about who is here and best able to answer it. I mean, you can certainly say, if there's a specific person you might to, but we might also feel like that somebody else might, might also be able to provide information about the question you raise.
Okay. All right, now, pose those later if it's all right. It's great to be here. I'm lying through my teeth. Let's, let's do a thought experiment. Let's say that every one of us who's recently received an unsolicited cash offer on our house accepted it. Now the city is majority owned by private equity. Try to imagine what that looks like. So just hold that in your head for a while. Central business zoning crept into our neighborhood like the camel's nose under the tent. First, it was one lot, and then it was two lots, and both snatched away from the neighborhood by the form-based codes. Now, with the wave of a magic wand, the planning board has made it into one big lot. What was once Zero Phillips Place is now something or other Holly Street. Nothing to see here. This is just, this peninsula, this thumb in our eye is its own proud CB side street parcel, crammed full of monthly renters. Just make sure the sidewalk goes to the curb and that you put in a few trees surrounded by flexible paving. The point of the form-based code is to make development easier. There is an affordable housing crisis in the U.S., but that's not what this is all about. This is about enlarging the city's tax base, and to make that happen, the city is more than willing to roll out the red carpet to developers. We've been told by people in this room, people, multiple, that the cities wanted to develop this for a long time, and this form-based code makes that a lot easier. And if you believe that, you're not going to change your mind. And most of the people in this room, or in this room in 1922, or 2022, 19, I was, I was here, I'm sorry, the rest of you are too young for that. But, you know, I have a lot on this, but I know what's going to happen, and you know what's going to happen. And I would just like to read something from, that Jerry Budgur wrote to Carolyn in 2013. And I think many of you still remember Jerry, and I hope fondly. He says, "I do have some concerns about the legislation and the process of bringing it to the city council. There is great concern that developers will begin intensively searching for parcels in URB and URC so they can tear down or build around existing structures and construct much larger disproportionately sized buildings that shoehorn as many units as possible on the property. There is concern that existing ordinances for townhouses and attached structures have not been reviewed with respect to the proposed new zoning. These sorts of developments are routinely the most controversial, and many people are worried we are further inviting this type of infill without a public discussion." So that's my time. He goes on, "But it's the same stuff you've heard." And you always say, "I've heard this, I could write this, you're all annoyed to have to sit through public comment." But, you know, it's been over 10 years, people saying the same things, and we're still back here again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. If, if, if you have that and are able to email it to us, we would include it in the record and, and make sure that, that full statement. Also, if you have written down, even if you wanted to pass it up, if you had prepared the questions that you had, we would, I would take that, and we could revisit it.
I haven't got that.
Okay, that's okay. Maybe if others, if you pass along a question if they have time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I will bounce to online and call on Colin Hoffmeister.
Yes, hi, hello, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Thank you for having this meeting. Of course, I'd like to have this, this parcel zone back to the URC. You know, a zoning change is a major regulatory action, and the neighborhood was not informed about this change. In 2020, O'Connell Development did purchase this lot, and it was URC. And it's interesting that in 2022, without public notice, without a butters being notified, the zoning was changed. So that's, that's why we're here today. And doesn't it make sense to notify a butters, something that's going to radically change the, the value of their property, their privacy, access to sunlight, increased traffic? I mean, we were told that all we have to do is tell the property owner, and that just makes no sense. So that's why I'm asking for your support to put this back to URC. You know, we're told that, that this meets Sustainable Northampton, but there, there isn't a lot of information to back that up. I read Sustainable Northampton, and it says, "Any commercial project that shall be introduced to a residential area shall also be coincide with major road improvements." That's not happening here. It also says it must improve the character of the neighborhood. There's nothing about a 65-foot-tall building, 28 feet from my house, and 188 or so feet long, that's going to improve the character of an 18, mid-1800s neighborhood. We're not against housing. The original plan that O'Connell, when they bought the property, was to build, was to build housing, and I was happy for that personally. It's been a parking lot, and it's not the prettiest thing. It's been there, and it's functioned, and then it's been vacant, and other things happened in that parking lot. I was welcoming neighbors. But that, that script got flipped. We're told that, you know, when the notification came out in 2022, it said downtown Florence Center and downtown. Well, Phillips Place is not downtown. His 128-page document have gone through, there's not one indication that says Phillips Place or the parcel number. So that's not deficient notification, that's lack of a notification. And that's what I'm asking you, whether, what you feel about housing and what should be there or not. I think you owe a responsibility in your positions and to the city, and to your positions. They say, "This, this was not notified to the public." I mean, a non-transparent government on a major regulatory action was not notified. So from 2022 to 2025, March, the city and the developer worked in cahoots on this, and that's fine, that's what they do, but none of us knew. Also part of Sustainable Northampton, it says that residents should have a voice. We have had no voice. So we've been throttled, we're, we're been on our back foot, we're going against a major developer. As you know, there's, there's now, you know, and.
That's the time.
Against this. So I ask for, I ask for your support. This project is, is very detrimental to my personal property, sunlight, privacy, air, and that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffmeister. Alex, are you in favor, are you speaking in favor of the legislation or in opposition? Not even, that's all right, okay.
Hi, Alex Bowman, Market Street. I've been actually following this along for a long time. I think that the, the boards here have an opportunity to right a wrong instead of double, sorry, right a wrong instead of double down on it tonight. Actually, you know, if you look at this one lot, we don't have to look, talk about URC, we don't have to talk about URB, we just have to look at the map. And you can see that this one lot that is actually down Phillips Place is unlike any other lot in all of Northampton, and that it's not directly on a side street, and it's in the side street district. We have other lots that are split. So even if they are on a side street, they are split in side street and URC. And this is one lot that is just completely different, and it doesn't make any sense. I think that the, I would prefer that would be, to me, it would make the most sense to have it split, the front lot is side street and the back lot is URC. But the backside of this, that is its own separate lot, that it goes down Phillips Place, does not make any sense. And I think the, there is an opportunity to right that wrong, and, you know, it's not, it's okay to make mistakes, but you have to fix them when things are done incorrectly. And that's really what I see here. Thank you.
Thank you. And then back online, Nina Shield.
Hello. Hi, my name is Nina Shield, and I live in Northampton. I'm speaking in support of the rezoning from CBSS to URC of the parcel in question. There's been a distressing amount of misinformation out there about the Phillips-Holly project, so I really do appreciate the chance to clarify. As we've heard, the zoning of 2022 has peeled back many protections that we claim to want in our new construction, from affordability to green space. For most of my adult life, I've lived in big cities in apartment buildings without a car. These are places with robust public transit and walkable streets. I know parking is not a popular suggestion these days, but cars are a necessary reality for most of us. In fact, I know several people who work downtown and park in Phillips. I was surprised during a site visit when one of our city councillors suggested that they could just park in a garage downtown. They park on our streets because it's free, and a garage could easily cut into an hour's wages. I think zoning needs to be thought of holistically in this way, rather than just affecting one neighborhood. If we need affordable housing, we should require it, not offer up our city to developers and hope they do the right thing. As council member Jarrett recently noted, there were no applications for affordable housing credits this cycle, and why would there be when the new zoning encourages them to build without? A recent letter to the editor in the Gazette quoted the architect of another development nearby, who said, "We use front porches and front stoops to really retain the idea that this is a residential neighborhood. A return to URC would signal a return to contextual, historical, and respectful architecture that is a boon rather than a burden to the entire city." Thank you so much for your consideration.
All right, thank you. And Matt Houghey, did I say that right? Are you, are you speaking in favor of the?
Against.
Oh, against, okay. Actually, so let me.
Yeah. I, I'm not too happy about the bill, but I might clarify.
Okay, so you're speaking in favor of the legislation?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, of the proposed zoning amendment, yes.
So my name's Matt Houghey. I live at 16 Butler. I could throw a baseball off of this planned project. I had no intention of speaking, I was just going to come here to support my neighbors. But I wanted to read a quick, a couple of paragraphs from a Hampshire Gazette article about 111 Holly. And this is the quote from the developer. "Each unit has a single car garage, so parking would be one stall in a garage and one stall in an adjacent driveway. There'd be a total of 20 parking spaces proposed for the property. There's no bicycle racks proposed because all the units have garages, and we would be asking the residents to store their bikes inside. There'd be no centralized dumpster on the site, as garages also enable the units to have their own waste and recycling. The building design is in the townhouse style, according to architect Scott Wade Law, who presented his design to the board. It's inspired by houses on Eastern Avenue. We were influenced by the character of the neighborhood. The types of buildings helped inform what design we came up with. We used porches, sidewalks to retain the streetscape, to retain the idea that this is a residential neighborhood. This is down the street, this is a hop, skip, and a jump, and there's so much goodwill. We did, and we've been called NIMBYs over this. When we supported previous projects, we supported the $500,000 worth of funding for the church. So we're not, we're not NIMBYs. What we want is goodwill. We don't want people to, pardon my language, completely take the piss out of us. They got, they got their extra floor. We know there's not enough parking. We know they did the parking study during inclement weather in late December, when people were out of town and the students were away. in late December, when people were out of town and the students were away. And it's just too much. Me and my neighbors have been left to beg, fundraise, hire lawyers, come here, waste our evenings to have to be stressed out. Why no goodwill on this one? Why couldn't we get anything? They got everything. Out-of-town developer. Developer who, you guys developed L3, I believe, as well. And what about us? What about the citizens, people who live here? We're not asking to shut this project down. All we wanted was some goodwill, to be treated with respect and for some of our concerns to be responded to. But we've got nothing. So here we are. And that's all I wanted to share. It's been a humiliating experience. We live there and we feel like that we're not being represented. We feel like there's been no goodwill. And you shouldn't have to beg for goodwill. You know, in all fairness, it should be a mutually beneficial relationship, just like the other developer at 111, who wanted zone without us even having to bug him. He said, "I want to fit into this neighborhood and do what's right." And that's all I want. That's all I want from these guys. But it's up to you. You know, they get everything, they've got everything they want.
Mr. Houghey, the, do you have any remarks?
That's it.
I mean, do you have any remarks directed to the proposed zoning amendment that is before us?
I support my neighborhood. And Colin and Dan and everything, they said, "I'm not going to pretend to be a zoning expert here, but I do know a little bit about goodwill and doing right by people and having an amicable kind of relationship and outcome." And this is just way too lopsided. We're getting screwed. That's really all I got to say.
Thank you. Mr. Brendel, are you looking to speak again?
I am and I can wait till the end. That's more than fine. I just, I have a point of order question, if I can raise that.
Sure.
So just as the, I guess, like sponsor and drafter of the legislation, am I here to also answer questions? I think there was some, my credibility was sort of challenged by the, by the planning director and I, you know, I am here to answer questions and to state the facts as I see them behind the ordinance. I'm happy to speak to any questions that anybody in the public or in the room has. But I feel uncomfortable about having the basis of why I drafted this so challenged and ripped apart without an ability to respond to it. That feels.
Well, so, Mr. Brendel, it's a petition with 10, with 10 people who signed. And so we'll, we're going to move through people who want to speak. And if there are questions that are posed that, that, you know, are appropriately directed to you, that's fine. You can take three minutes now to speak if you wish.
Sure. You know, I, I find it funny that the planning director, who did draft this legislation and sees this as being, you know, oversight of her judgment, which, you know, I wouldn't say that, but that's how she stated it to me, pushed back against many of my claims about affordability and environmentalism and then effectively reiterated them. So yes, if you're building more than six units, some of them have to be affordable. There's a lot of green space. It is true that the form-based code gives a little bit of flexibility to the planning board, et cetera, for architecture and for matching the neighborhood. As the members of this planning board know, not the case for central business side street, which the planning director was also in the room to explain there's very little flexibility in that actually. And it's mainly geared towards maximizing the footprint and the platform. I also just, I want to raise a concern. I don't, I don't know how normal or usual it is for a legislative process like this in which we are putting forward a piece of legislation to consider it for so many people to speak against it before the public is even allowed to state their opinions or anything like that. You know, that makes sense for the debate, but in terms of just presenting this initial legislation, I just feel like it has been underserved by some of the information that was said after my presentation. And I feel like the public was underserved by some significant misinformation that was contained therein.
Thank you. Meg Robbins.
Hi, thank you. My name is Meg Robbins and I also live in greater downtown North Hampton, a prime neighborhood for chaotic developers. And I support this amendment and here's why. I have a question. How has a planning committee interacted with impacted city residents on this request? How many members of this committee and city council have visited the site and met with residents? For those who have heard from residents, how have you brought their concerns into your decision-making? Does it matter? I would like to hear from the petition signers on their experience with council and planning committee site visits that engaged their input. In accordance with the North Hampton Sustainability Plan of 2008, which was created with over 3,000 city resident responses to a survey, along with multiple meetings in a 28-month process, the recent survey on picture Main Street only had 62 city resident undisaggregated responses, for example. That 2008 North Hampton Sustainability Plan was created by a broad group of city voices and brought back to residents for a "did we get it right?" two sessions once it was drafted. I did hear Director Mish refer to the updated plan, which was not a product of community process. This plan required an annual evaluation and it mandated a recognition and fostering of the unique history, character, and function of each residential, commercial, mixed-use, and open-space neighborhood. It was pre-form-based code. Those of us who were part of that discussion were thrilled by the sense of empowerment that plan afforded local voices and meaningful ways to work together in considering where development and what kind of development best worked with neighborhoods. Those of us who were dumbfounded by the steamrolling of city versus neighborhood in Warfield Place realized that this community-created agreement meant nothing when power overran people. Phillips Place is a beautiful and historic district. This new proposed O'Connell building is neither. And I know we're not referencing the building, but it's an example of what it would cause with this, unless we accepted this amendment. North Hampton can create housing that is affordable, accessible, beautiful, historically complimentary with the architecture of the neighborhood. Axing zoning requirements and expanding downtown building acceptability that is incredibly out of sync with what brings visitors and dwellers to our city is irreversible. I also heard Director Mish mention parking requirements for these buildings, which seems to fly in the face of councillor Jarrett Nelkin's proposed ordinance to reduce that requirement for developers. This is a city-wide discussion. I would ask this group of elected and appointed representatives to put this consideration out to the general public. How do we want our city to be? Where is the voice of citizens on the planning board and in the committee in decision-making? At what point do we say that resident voice and resident vision matter? Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else in the room who wishes to speak? All right, returning to the online, Quaverly. You with us? Very good.
Yep. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, great. So I'm speaking to you tonight as the Ward Three City Councilor. Everybody with the exception of Meg Robbins, who's spoken tonight, is my constituent and this is in my ward. I want to speak to why I think that this was not an appropriate change in zoning in the first place, which would support your changing it back to the U R C. And I also want to speak to why I think you may have hesitations doing that. So first, as a city councillor, to me, this looks like a case of potential spot zoning, which is a problem for the city legally in terms of our liability. Right? If we have changed this parcel for the financial benefit of the owner, that's a serious problem. And so you should want to change it, at the very least, just for that reason, to get us out of hot water. But I also understand that in the context of your larger conversation, many of you feel like this is a greater good to pack these apartments in here. And so you're sort of pushing onward. But I think that the conversation that the community is just beginning to have and I think will have in a much greater scope during the elections, I think this kind of issue is really coming to the forefront and will be a topic of debate, is that these policies, this zoning change, the way that it's being enacted and the loopholes that it has inside of it are not meeting that greater good. In fact, they're really quite doing the opposite. And so what we see in this development, for example, is we see luxury, small condos. And the concept of trickle-down housing is easy to debunk, but I understand our planning director espoused that, this idea that people would move out of houses at retirement age and those would become available and be affordable. You haven't done the kind of assessing to see if that's really happening. What I think seems to be happening, based on my constituent base and what I see in the change in Ward Three, is we just have wealthy people moving into expensive condos from other cities, which is fine, we welcome them, we're very happy to have them. But it's not achieving that greater good that you wanted of there being more attainable housing, more affordable housing. What we're seeing is people who live and rent, especially in Ward Three, we have a lot of renters, they cannot afford to move to a new apartment when their lease is up, when their home that they rent is being sold. And so we are actually losing community members. So I say that not because tonight you're talking about whether or not to approve this project or whether or not to revisit this code altogether, but I say it because I want you to take pause and slow down when you think, "I'm doing this for the greater good. I'm going to push this through."
That was time.
Thank you. So if I could just finish that sentence. Since this was not a correct or proper, or I would argue even potentially legal change of the zoning because of the spot zoning, and since it is not serving our greater good and these policies need to be revisited and looked at anyway, please don't charge forward with leaving this as it is. Please change the zoning back so we can start to work on some of this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any, anybody else in the room? Anybody else online? I don't see any other hands online. We are, we're not going back, Mr. Brendel, at this, at this time to hear from people multiple times. We're going to take the discussion to the, to the bodies. So, why don't we start with? We have some questions. It was a little, I don't know what kind of questions you, yeah, not many. Okay. Why don't, why don't we hold those for just a minute? And why don't we just kind of start with an initial discussion amongst ourselves? Anybody want to go first?
Sure. Well, I have a question for Director Mish. Could you describe how zoning changes affect future use? So can you describe how this change would affect any previously approved plan or plan in progress?
Sure. So the way zoning works is it's, it's forward-looking. So any zoning amendments are, would be for projects that are proposed in the future. And, you know, the planning board did approve a project for this site and that's going through its process. I don't know what the outcome of that will be, the special permit, you know, it was appealed. But so the way the zoning works is if, if there is a use that's in place that doesn't meet the zoning that then is adopted, that use continues. It's considered a pre-existing, non-conforming use. So we have lots of those all over the city.
And so if the current project that was approved doesn't go through for some reason, would that be the moment where the zoning becomes, say this was approved, right?
Yeah.
And then the current project doesn't go through, which could happen for many reasons.
Right.
Is, are there any rights for the property owner still to continue to dry a new project under the old zoning? Or is that the end?
So, you know, there's, once a permit is issued, there's three years to initiate the project, unless an amendment is sought for that. So after three years, if the project is not exercised, then the new zoning effectively would be applicable.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
I also just wanted to clarify something in public comment that in a previous meeting, I noted that there were no applications in this Community Preservation Act round for affordable housing, but that the average is still split relatively evenly between other categories. Just, I think that's been conflated with this project and with, so I just wanted to clarify that.
And, and I just want for everybody who's watching in the room and online, we are, we are, the bodies are talking now and directing questions to the people most appropriate to answer. We are not taking further comment at this time. So, and given the planning board's agenda after this, I don't, I don't anticipate another round of public comment, so.
Hello, can I speak?
No.
Councillor Elkins, I had a question.
I'm sorry. No, Mr. Brendel, we're talking amongst the body and.
Are we sure nobody's going to ask a question about the actual legislation? I, how can we be sure that there's not going to be a question that I can speak to?
If, if we are, we will, we will pose the questions back to the people we need, that we want to hear from.
And you're sure that I will not have any questions posed to me despite writing this legislation and bringing this question to the floor?
I am not sure of that. If that comes up, we will, we will.
The comment just implied that I would not have another reason to stay or speak. So I'm happy to stay around if that's what's happening. I've been raising my hand to just try to clarify whether you need me to answer questions.
I think you should stay for the whole, whole hearing. Any, anybody else have any questions right now? Karen, I, okay, briefly.
Well, I think it's a point of clarification. People are asking about just rezoning, keeping the one-piece CB or doing the whole thing. I think it bears worthy of discussion about what the parcels were talking about and what we're talking about in terms of what was zoned when. Because I've heard two, I've heard several people reference that the front parcel on the corner of Holly and Phillips should have been rezoned in 2022, but the other one not. And so that one was our, you know, I just think it makes sense to clarify.
Yeah, I actually, I do too. And actually, that is a question that I, I had. And the, which was if you could recap the, the history of that particular parcel. And the other question I have is the effect of the A and R that's been put in place and the, in the future, you know, the possibility of having two different zoning on the, now that it's a single parcel.
Sure. So I think the easiest thing I'm just, is to share my screen, but for some reason, I'm, here we go. Just to clarify for people. So what's on, what's been petitioned is for this block of land, which is the entire parking lot of the former church. Oh, thanks, yeah. So in this submittal, it's showing this rectangular block and there's a dividing line here. And I'll get to that in a second. But in 2012, the parcels that were brought into the Central Business District included these parts. included these parcels along Holly, on the north, on the east side of Holly. Here, this long parcel, this deep parcel here, which included this little cutout here. It also included all these parcels along Holly Street that were a different commercial zoning. And then this portion, like the majority, so more than half of the parking lot, was brought into central business in 2012. What happened in 2022 was transitioning from just central business to these different subzones and including, so all the central business that was already central business, and then adding this smaller portion of the back part of the property into, from URC to central business side street. So that's, those are the two timing pieces that I was describing previously. When a parcel is owned by one entity, if it's split-zoned, the way the zoning works is that the allowed, the dimensional requirements for the parcel that is the bigger portion of the parcel, that governs. So frontage setbacks and uses govern. For the back portion, the, where it was previously up until 2022, urban residential C, that would, the same uses could be allowed, but the density for just the little portion that's URC would have to comply and the setbacks would have to comply. But overall, the portion of the property where the, that's biggest sort of governs for zoning. And effectively, it's treated the same, no matter what, whether there's a line that artificially drops down the middle or not. Many times when people have two parcels, it's always treated, you know, singly because under zoning, particularly if you don't have a non, if you don't have a conforming lot, the lots merge based on case law and the history of zoning. So, but it's easier to receive one tax bill, one stormwater bill instead of two for one property. So many times there are people every year that come in and want us to essentially eliminate that line in between. And so that's effectively what the applicant, the property owner in this case did. So it was an administrative change.
And that's the A and R?
Yes.
Can I just get, I just want a clarification on something you said that, so the only thing about the back parcel, the Phillips Place parcel that would, it would still be under the, if this were to pass, or if it had remained the previous zoning, the density and setbacks would be the only two things that would be needed, that would be different from the front parcel?
And the.
So the zoning for the front parcel, which is the one on the corner.
Yeah, which has been, was central business since 2012.
Yes.
Yes.
Which would essentially apply to the other parcel, but only the density and setbacks.
And that, and you'd have to, on that portion that, you know, if it were to revert back to URC, that portion would also have to meet the minimum height for URC, which is 50 feet, and the setbacks are 10 feet and 10 feet on the side and the front.
Maximum height, right?
Uh, maximum height 50, yeah.
Sorry, which setbacks are 10 feet for which zone?
Urban residential C, front setbacks and side setbacks are 10 feet.
What's the rear, or is there a rear setback? Oh, there would be on that lot.
Yes.
What would the rear setback be in urban residential C?
20 feet.
And what, what does central business side street? I think it consider, does it consider the zoning district that it abuts?
Yes.
And how does it consider it?
So in the central business side street district, when you're, if you're, if the parcel abuts a residential district, there is a de facto 20-foot setback, unless there are other ways to, you could go to the planning board and get approval to reduce that if you're adding certain buffers. And so that's built into the zoning current.
So the minimum setback in central business side street is 20 feet, which matches the 20-foot rear setback of URC?
Right.
And so.
But it's a little bit more than the side setback, for example, in URC. The side setback is 10 feet.
So it actually provides more setback protection on the side. So the side for URC would have been 10 feet.
Right.
But because it's central business side street, it's 20 feet.
Right. And then the height is different too. The height in central business is 70 feet, not 50 feet.
So that's the real difference, is the height of the building?
Setbacks are the, are close to the same. It's the height of the building that we're talking about is the major difference.
So the maximum allowed height in the central business district is 20 feet higher. You know, that's not, and so it's 70 versus 50. But of course, that's not whatever, the proposed project was about 52 feet, so it wasn't 70.
Can I speak to this question?
I'm not sure what question you mean, you mean you would like to speak to. Can you state the question that you're speaking to?
Yeah, the question that was just asked about if height would be the major change from a URC to a CB, Central Business SS?
No, I'm satisfied with Director Mish's technical answer. I'm not looking.
That's why I wrote the legislation.
I understand. I think the.
Based on incorrect information.
No, I think it answered the question.
I do have a question about, about question.
I will let you pose a question because you can get all your questions out. So if you can pose a question.
Can you please step to the mic and make sure the green light is on? And I should do the same, so everyone at Zoom can hear you.
Okay. When, no, it's great, sorry. When the church sold the property, or before they sold the property, there was a big change to central business. And so the zoning of most of the property, but that lot was two lots and only one of the lots was central business. Who did, who was responsible for that zoning? Who was responsible for just doing one lot and not two lots?
Okay, I think I got your question.
Yeah.
And let's take a gander at trying to answer it. So if you want to have a seat, we'll talk through and we'll come back. So, so before I get to that, is there any other just questions from legislative matters or the planning board in addition? Okay. Oh, go ahead, Councilor Berry. Sorry, one sec. Did you get that question, Laura?
I think so.
Okay, all right. We will come back to it.
All right. A couple, well, a couple of quick things. One, I think this is for Director Mish, is that what I've heard is a lot of talk about affordable housing versus what I think is attainable housing. So I think that I just want everyone, especially for folks who are listening to this, our community, to understand, there's a lot of buzzwords that happen, and I know I've been here. So that is one thing I would love you to explain that portion. But then I think for me, it would help as we pull back and look at that area. What I've seen is that this area is unique, as is each of our communities. So I'm wondering what the kind of vision is for that area. I know that 33 Holly is there. That area has been designated as kind of Paradise East. You know, while it is not technically downtown, there have been efforts from the city to kind of push traffic and expand things, whether it's the lighting there. And, you know, we have a new deli there. There are things. So I'd love you to address kind of how the thinking is on what this portion of the city is going to be in that vision, especially in terms of workers. You know, I've been a service industry worker for my entire life here in Northampton. And so I pass those two and I'll ask anything else, Luke.
And can I add, can I just add to that question? Or just, can you also speak about this in context to the various sort of reports and studies and plans that have been adopted by the city over the course of the many years?
Sure. And I guess before I start, just to clarify, the last conversation, we were talking about sort of the basic differences between CB and URC. There are obviously many other details in the zoning that we didn't discuss that, you know, have differences. But so this area, as you noted, has been sort of coined as Paradise City East. And the idea really is to, you know, there have always been, Market Street was the original downtown for Northampton. And so that energy has waxed and waned over the years. But certainly coming, probably mostly, I guess, coming out of COVID, you know, there's been a real interest in trying to stand up and bring our downtown back. And there has been a little bit of a disconnect with the bridge. So the lighting, the whole idea about the lighting was to really sort of re-nit the parts of downtown and to encourage this as sort of, as part of the downtown and look at opportunities to both encourage new business and housing, to support those businesses. We did a, in the middle of COVID, we sought out the expertise from the state to do this rapid recovery plan. And so there were a number of recommendations that came out of that. And one of them was looking at sort of how we take the, all these opportunities we have in our downtown and try to really support them. And those opportunities include Market Street, Holly Street, you know, Strong, Main Street, and all the side streets that connect. The update to this Climate Resilience and Regeneration Plan in 2021 also talked about, again, sort of economic development and linking the housing piece to that and trying to build and sustain a strong business community. The, there are a lot of different characteristics in, you know, there's not one uniform character of our side streets. And they, they change, of course, across, you know, block faces. So the end more towards, Bridge Street has higher, more, bigger mass buildings. As you go down Holly Street, there've been some lower-scale development over time. So when you talk about trying to integrate into the fabric of downtown, they provide opportunities to sort of build up those sort of lower-density parcels along the railroad, but also, you know, speak to and talk to the buildings that are in downtown, either on the same side of the railroad tracks or on the sort of west side of the railroad. So the zoning, the whole point of creating the zoning that was a form-based code was to have that community conversation of what are the important elements of our downtown character? And what are the things that we want to sort of reflect in new projects? And knowing that new projects will change the streetscape, but the idea is to set up those parameters in a community conversation before development even happens. So there's a clear cookbook, so everyone is aware of what those potentials are and what the city wants out of development. And so that's why the conversation, you know, took four years to build a form-based code, was having all of those public discussions about where we should look at directing that new growth, the new types of mixed use, the new type of building characteristics that are appropriate in and on the edges of downtown. And there was a lot of discussion about edges as well and how you, you know, encourage that type of housing and mixed uses that we want, but understanding that that's maybe a different scale than what's on the immediate residential district that's next door. And so when you talk about housing and affordable housing versus attainable housing, like I said, affordable housing is really defined as subsidized, deeply subsidized housing that needs both primarily, well, it's all public funding to basically offset the cost of building it. So the cost of building housing is the same, whether it's for a nonprofit affordable housing project or a private sector developer. And it's just a matter of who's paying for the ultimate resident to live there. Is it the public sector or is it a private property resident? And we know the housing, the cost of housing is going up and has been going up dramatically since 2019. And the way to try to address that and allow people to enter the market, whether it's transferring from an existing home or coming to Northampton for the first time or being a student and trying to find housing, is to sort of make those, allow flexibility to have smaller units so that you're not biting off as big a chunk in the housing market and therefore it can be more accessible for you to get into that. I don't know if I answered all those questions.
It was a lot of questions.
There was like two questions.
Yeah, thank you. I'll pass to other folks. But I did, before I pass, just want everyone to know that all of your comments and all of your information is being processed. Like, I want everyone to know they're heard. You know, whether it's parking for workers, I think is an issue. So that is not for here, but that is something that I know affects folks. And I do want to say before I pass on one is that when we talk about character of places, I want to remind people that buildings are not our communities. It's the people who live there. And so as a person who has rented my entire life here in Northampton, I want to remind you that there are people who rent in our area who improve the character. I have personally helped improve my property. We've built gardens and done those things. So when we talk about these things, I want to remind folks that we are talking about people and that is the most important thing for me.
Thank you. I'm going to make one more pass here. And let's talk those questions. Sure, let's take a stab at it.
The only one I really heard was your microphone.
The only one I really heard was from Meg Robbins. And she was asking at first, you know, how has the planning board interacted with impacted city residents on this project? How many have visited the sites? So I guess that was a question to planning board members. And then she said she would like to hear from petitioners on their experience with planning board members who have engaged in this process. That's all I caught anyways.
And then there was the one that we just heard.
The one that we just heard.
About who was responsible for the lot.
Alex, did you have a? I'll rephrase it. Are there any other lots not on Side Street?
Lots that are in Side Street District that are not, that are in the Side Street District that are not on Side Streets?
On what you?
This is Phillips Place, which is not Side Street. Are there any other lots that are in the Side Street District? Because it seemed like an aberration.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I get it. And I do remember that question. So, so Meg Robbins' question, I think, goes to the question of the project and the specific site plan, which is not on the table tonight. I don't, I don't know that if any planning board members want to sort of engage generally. I, you know, in terms of your process, but I, that's, I don't think that's relevant to tonight's agenda item in terms of that. So if anybody wants to answer, you certainly can, but.
Yeah, if I might, because this comes up quite frequently. If I might, because this comes up quite frequently. The great majority of planning board members visit the site before any large, before any public hearing to get our own questions out with the plans. We're often cautioned not to speak with the butters or the property owner at that point so that we can stay in parcel. But yeah, we make it a habit of doing site visits, but we don't go knocking on doors, soliciting input or a butter's perspective. soliciting input or a butters perspective. Because often it creates that open meeting kind of problematic situation.
That's true. And I remember back when I was in the planning board that we had a few site visits where we all walked and did not speak to each other because we wanted to make sure we were complying with open meeting law. I, I would just add, as a general matter, it's often the case, it's not often the case, at least on council, that any zoning ordinance that's being proposed is, is just, is this specific? Is just one site? It does come up occasionally, the place at Village Hill, the little triangle outside. So, so sometimes there are examples. I can't speak for everybody else. I, I do my best to make sure I go and visit things that come up. When it's comprehensive holistic zoning, that's the whole city. So you have to kind of familiarize yourself with, with the whole city and the, and the districts that we're talking about. I, to go to Mr. Roman's question, Carolyn, do you have any? Well, I, I will say, first of all, that, you know, part of this property does, is on, is on a side street and is, and is on, is on Holly, which I think is, is very commonly understood to be side street and within that district. I do agree, I agree with framing that it does extend a little bit onto Philip Street in a way. So I, I don't disagree with that. But just with that difference in framing, Carolyn, do you know offhand of any other parcels that kind of?
Well, I'm looking at the zoning and, you know, that's the issue with parcels at the edge. You know, particularly if it's a, a larger parcel or oddly shaped, it's going to poke into, you know, the surrounding zoning. So not just about downtown, but we have examples, we do have examples of other specifically side street or gateway parcels that are sort of surrounded by the residential districts. Some of that is a result of the fact that there, they were sort of commercial zones at one point or had commercial uses. And so we wanted to make them conforming. But throughout the city, there are examples of sort of those edge parcels that project into a different district that they're surrounded by.
Okay, thank you. And to take a stab at Mr. Wolf's question, I think the question was, is who was responsible? Or whose, is it whose job it was in 2022 to think about that?
Yeah. How did it happen that it, that that one lot, which was urban residential, has been like everything else that was changed at that point was not changed? While the law on Holly was changed.
Okay.
So.
Okay, I think I understand your question. And I will say, I.
I think he's asking back to 2012, when the original lot was brought into the Central Business District, before the Central Business Side Street District even.
When all of, all of the church property was, was rezoned as central business.
My understanding from Director Mish's comments, that was 2012 that that happened.
Yeah, so just to get the chronology straight, in 2012 was when sort of half of that non-conforming parking lot was pulled into Central Business District. And then in 2022, right? Then it, it was, it was pulled together with the form-based code.
Correct. And, and the, the, it was not owned in 2012. It wasn't, it was owned by the church at that point when it was rezoned. And they were just starting to do their marketing. And as I mentioned, there was a previous project that was approved for the site that fell apart. So the other piece about, you know, the why it wasn't, why won't, weren't both done at the same time? I think at that time, there was, because there was a different buffer zone requirement as for, for central business adjacent to residential, that was sort of, there was, it was unclear about what that property would be used for. And they also created sort of a portion of a de facto buffer. But then that's why, when we did the form-based code, that was built into the form-based code. So it also made sense to pull it in at that time that, that it would create those additional protections. And it would be, it was less cumbersome for building out the property.
All right.
Can I?
You first.
Do we have any idea why this was actually two parcels? It's a parking lot. So, I mean, was it something before or it makes sense?
God deemed it so.
I mean, that's what it seems like.
I have no idea.
I mean, you wouldn't go up and look at it and say like, this is two parcels? Like, it's just a parking lot?
Yeah, right. I have no, yeah, it was only on paper, right? Because it was, the parking lot took up the whole piece. Yeah. But I have no idea what the history of the deed transfers were from way back. Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm sure that's true, that there were probably, there were probably houses there.
I've done some research.
Yep. Chris.
So while we're on that question about 2022, because it's a little confusing for me also, though, all the iterations of the zoning and how form-based zoning came into play. And I think there was one other question for Mr. Hoffmeyer, sir, is about why didn't the butters get notified of the zoning hearings in 2022? So, and I don't, so what I'm still a little unclear about is the form-based zoning was, that big package that we spent years on, was finally approved by the city council in 2022, probably right around January, I'm not sure, that's irrelevant, but it was approved in 2022. And this was, this zoning map, so to speak, was part of that packet. So a butters, a butters, closer butters within 300 feet, as we normally do, weren't notified of that hearing because it was a different kind of larger zoning package as opposed to a single hearing where we notified closer butters? I'm trying to understand, and maybe Carolyn can help me there.
So there's different notification requirements depending on what the public hearing is. Zoning amendments are legislative actions that affect the entire city. So there are not deemed to be one a butter or another that is affected, you know, differently. That, I mean, that's the way the state statutes are set up. So no notice is given to a butters. Only when there are map changes, the property owner that is affected by that map change, so changing the zoning designation, gets notified. And then more generally, there's advertising requirements and, but for public hearings for specific projects that are happening in, on a particular property, that's when the butters are notified. And so, well, but in this case, and in many zoning amendment cases, there's lots of buildup to this and, you know, lots of meetings around the communities in different locations, and particularly with such a big package, that's what happened in this case. So we had meetings with Ward Three, we had meetings with the DNA, the chamber of residents in downtown and so forth.
Thanks. Were butters notified for this meeting that we're having to talk about a zone change on a parcel?
No, the petitioners were given the notice, the official notice, and the property owner was notified.
And notices in general for the, for the hearing, as with all zoning.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else have any last, let's say, questions? Okay. If we don't have further questions, I would, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Okay.
Are we doing this, both boards are making their own motions?
Yeah, let's do both boards.
Okay, is there a second for the planning board?
Second motion to close public hearing.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Can I see a show of hands?
A little discussion first.
Of course.
Thank you. Just to clarify, once the public hearing is closed, we're not going to reach out to the planning board director, the applicant, no one else. We're just going to have the conversation here.
Correct.
Okay. And often the planning board goes through this thing. If we close the public hearing, that means that we need to make adjustments in that evening rather than moving it to another night. So there's that assumption also that we're going to come to some kind of conclusion about moving forward this to the council tonight.
Well, yeah, our recommendation to the council, which can be positive, negative, or neutral.
Okay.
Right.
I feel confident we can get there tonight. Okay, so a motion's been made and seconded. Can I see a show of hands? Okay, planning board has voted to close the public comment.
Okay. And.
I will move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Public comment?
Public hearing for legislative matters. I know, it's because we have two, so I had to go through both of them. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None are opposed, so the public hearing portion are, is closed. And want to be mindful of planning board's further agenda. So if we, and we've had a lot of discussion, but if we could, let's have some discussion and so we can see about moving through to recommendations.
I'll kick it off. So the gentleman in the audience who's talking about the, the two parcels that are shown on the zoning map, I, I understand that now it's an A and R and it's one parcel. But putting that aside, the two parcels that are still shown on the map, one is kind of sticking into the residential zone a little bit more. And I completely see that. The ordinance, the proposed ordinance in front of us is to change both of them back to URC, which I think is slightly incorrect, as we've heard from the, you know, it's been in the Central Business District since 2012. But, but putting that aside, just from my own perspective, I could see entertaining switching the, the one that was URC back to URC. But I, I wouldn't support at all switching the one that was Central Business and then Central Business Side Street more recently back to URC like that. So that's just kind of where I'm coming from. And so I'm not quite sure how to, how to make a recommendation other than maybe with that comment back to city council. That's kind of where I'm at personally, if that makes sense. It's all convoluted.
No, it made sense. Anyone want to speak next?
I.
Sam.
I, I just think that these types of petitions where you have 10 people who obviously care, and that's great, but that's just not how good legislation is, is thought through. This was, I, I know, because I was at those very long meetings, that this was something that was thought over over a long period of time. And there was public comment. It didn't just come out of a vacuum, you know, with, you know, the evil low-paid people in our city, you know, twiddling their thumbs. And it's just not, you know, the, the, the results of, of voting yes on petitions is what is now led to the, the problem on King Street with the, with the dealership. Didn't need to happen and it shouldn't happen now. It's bad. This is, of all the things, the petition that I'd like to do is to get rid of the ability to have 10 people sign a petition to change the law. It's just not how good laws are written. Vote people out, change the law, but you don't do it midstream. So I would vehemently vote against this motion.
There's not a motion yet, but I hear what you're saying. Alex, I feel like you're stirring up.
Just since the King Street lot was mentioned, I just want to clarify that the property owners have preserved the use for three years by submitting, or I forget the exact mechanism, but that, that is not the reason, as I understand it, that they're not moving forward. So I want to acknowledge that the options for Central Business side are a big change from the options in Urban Residential C. And it's a big change for the, it can be a big change for the neighborhood certain, if the approved plan goes through. And we always have to balance the needs of the whole community and the needs of the neighborhood it affects. And I, I recognize the impacts that this has. So I highly recommend the book, The Affordable City by Shane Phillips. In it, he describes three different strategies for affordability, supply, subsidy, and stability. And he argues, and I agree, that we need to do all three of these things. Increase supply so that market forces are not pushing the costs ever higher. I think the need for housing here is demonstrated every month with the higher and higher prices that we're seeing. And reports show how many renters are housing cost burdened here, here in Northampton. And more, I really want to push back against the idea that more supply, it's not more supply that is raising prices. Prices are going up because of enormous demand. However, I want to be clear that that, in my mind, is one piece, that we also need to provide subsidy, and that's through federal, state, local grants, private donations, fundraising. If at all possible, that subsidy should be permanent, such as a, you know, a community land trust form with a 99-year lease, or if the state, state's forms can be permanent and not just 30 years, I think that that's, that's essential. And then providing stability through rent stabilization, property tax exemptions, tenants' options to purchase, legal support, all of those things need to happen as well. Some of those things are easier for us to do on a city level than others. Zoning changes are one way, one tool that we have to increase supply if market conditions allow it, if someone will, will build to it. But it's clear we need to do more than zoning. And I, I support state-level change on rent stabilization and increasing the subsidy for affordable housing in any way we can. I wanted to speak to building densely, that building densely means much less carbon emission per capita as compared to sprawling development. If we look at the map of like carbon emissions in cities, they look terrible because there's a lot of them right there in the city. But if you look at it per capita, cities are way greener than definitely suburbs. Suburbs are the worst, actually. And then I think rural areas are a bit in between. So the amount of trees and green space lost to build homes on individual lots in a sprawl, you know, sprawling type of development is enormous compared to development allowed, the development that's allowed by Central Business side. So I think this lot is appropriate for Central Business Side Street. I think it's in line with our Northampton Sustainability Plan, which describes this developed over decades with extensive public input. Its proximity to downtown, including a short walk to public parking lots where you can pay $45 a month for a parking space. Its close proximity to regular and express bus service to Amherst. So students, certainly, this, this could be a place that they could use and, and not need a car. It's, it is currently a parking lot. It stretches back as one use. So as, for example, if we, we were talking about a place that had a bunch of existing homes, that would, there would be an incentive there to tear down those homes and build, build an apartment building. That is not the case in here because we're talking about tearing down a parking lot. And retailer offices allowed as well, and expansions, expansion of those uses could create more vibrant, vibrancy. On-street parking promotes traffic calming. We can address concerns with parking zone changes, time limiting, residential permits, other tools in order to, to address the very real concerns about how parking is, is managed. And then lastly, the, that when we require more parking, we raise the cost of housing or the cost and the cost of doing business because it is required to be built, whether or not it is going to be used. And we also essentially invite people who have more cars to live there. If when we require less, the cost. If when we require less, the cost of construction is less and we invite people who have fewer cars to live there. You know, in terms of invite, I mean, people will make the choices that make sense for them. We're not trying to control folks in their uses. But we're saying, oh, this place comes with, or you have to pay for this spot or you'll have to pay. They're going, people who don't need a car are going to say, that's a great deal. I'm going to move here and people who need multiple cars will move somewhere else. So I don't support the proposed change and I will move a negative recommendation to city council.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, so second, yeah. Okay, all right. So that is on the floor. I do want to speak briefly. And so I, and this, you know, dates back to my my time on the planning board. I really will try to keep it brief in light of the hours. A couple of things that I've been consistent about throughout my time in this in this public service planning board and then on council, which is that I favor as a general matter, expanding the footprint of downtown. I've also, I think, been heard to say many times that, which I think Alex may, you know, spoke to a little bit, which is that we we're not going to cure a housing crisis by zoning alone, but it is one tool that is within within the city's toolbox that can go a long way. The other thing I will say, and this is kind of on a project by project basis when I was on planning board, is I always step back and think, what could be built by right as a as a single family home? And you can think of some, I, I, I'm not, I don't want to name names because these are our neighbors. These are our friends and people, you know, and we know in town. But there are some examples of in sort of infill development, in close in town homes that have been built that are very big and are built to the absolute maximum of space and height. And so I always want to think about that when 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 what we are doing is incentivizing a builder to build that as opposed to a project like what this zoning encourages that that we, however unsatisfying it can be, the special permit process, that we are eliminating it entirely when when we incentivize builders to build the thing that they can build without talking to anybody, just by following the rules. So those are kind of my guideposts when I, when I think about these things. And I I, so I am not in support of this legislation. What I will say is that I think that this parcel in this specific spot has really shown up a friction point between the urban residential and the the side street. And that I always see zoning as an ongoing discussion. And that, you know, while we're not talking about the project and and that, you know, that's before us, I do appreciate that this has given us an opportunity to think about about this friction point. And I will say, I think the maximum, a building built to the maximum height allowed in in side street of seven stories at that location, that that strikes me as obviously not correct. And and so why, so so this is what I would say. I'm, I'm, I'm a no tonight for this legislation for some of the reasons that Sam said, which is that that I don't think this is the way to do zoning legislation, that we need to do it holistically. I also think that we've had an opportunity with this to expose something that should be a part of our evolving, our ongoing conversation. And so I would support, and I would hope it would come from the planning department and and the city, a look at where side street, the 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 central side street district and urban residential come up together to see if we are truly doing the doing the best we can. I think without speaking again, you know, speaking in this general matter, that the project that that is that we're not talking about in many ways, kind of, it appears to me to have dialed back to to what is something quite close in terms of density and height that could be built by right as a single family home to to the distress of neighbors without any kind of input. And and that's, that's kind of the top end of what I I think makes sense at the at the boundaries of the where district, where the side street district and the urban residential meet. So I, I would say, I do appreciate that we've had this conversation. I'm sorry it has been difficult for people and some people don't, don't feel heard. But I do think that this conversation is going to be ongoing and that we will, that that there is room here and it is, you know, brought to light a way that we can be thinking holistically about city. It, it doesn't, I think, serve the whole city's needs to do something tonight that won't fix, that won't, it isn't likely at all to affect the project that that brought all this to our attention and not solve the same problem across where it could come up across the city. So I think, I, I think the holistic is is the way to go. I think zoning needs to be, you know, thoughtful across policy. And to Alex Bowman's point, we should look at what doesn't prove to be working, what, you know, could have been proposed but wouldn't have fit and and make that adaptation. So I would be open to the future and I frankly hope, hope maybe we'll get the opportunity to talk about that soon. But for tonight, I am also in support of a negative recommendation on this particular petition. I'm sorry, I wasn't very brief.
Was, was there a motion made?
There was a motion by legislative matters, but I wonder if, should we do ours vote first? Or do does planning board want to?
Whatever you think.
Finish its discussion and I, I think, I think.
Hear any more of our input before you vote or?
Yeah.
I would like to hear the planning board's.
Okay. Oh, sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't miked. Would anyone else on the planning board like to give us some thoughts?
George, interesting, thinking back, the history we've heard. I remember some of the conversations in this room on the second floor of the building next door at the Florence Civic Center about a lot of these zoning changes that happened when we were looking at the form based code. I remember talking about the Gateway District and Con Street and some of those conflicts between expansion of commercial residential mixed use and what it does to neighborhoods on Con Street, up on King Street by Trumbull. Those are other areas that we really kind of went over and talked about. Did any of us at that point in time have an image of a 50 foot building with 150, with 50 apartments in it? Probably not. I didn't go through that scenario. But we did all have that understanding that the city, especially downtown, needed to keep expanding and give opportunities for retail and housing. And that's why we're trying to stretch it out. I appreciate that at that point, when we looked at Holly Street, we really did go down the street from the old lumberyard, which is now the Arts Place and into the what's now the Education Center. I apologize for, I don't know their name. Heck, it used to be heck, now it's something else, I think. Heck, and now the newer development of 111. So that was a big swipe and it was a change that we all thought was pretty reasonable. And of course, yeah, it took into account the Catholic churches that were kind of starting to disassemble in front of our eyes across the city and across the nation and how we can help kind of preserve those or at least do something to utilize those. So given that, all that, I believe there was a lot of good, robust discussion. I'm not sure that everybody in every neighborhood got to come and engage in that. But the people that wanted to engage did, there was ample notice. I, and I don't want to step back from those discussions and those decisions that happened at the planning board and at the city council and within community meetings. So I, I want to say that I also would support kind of a recommendation not to endorse this this amendment. I think what we decided back then holds true for this parcel and other areas of the city that when we split it into the gateway and the side street and the central business.
Thanks, George. Anyone else from the planning board?
Yeah, I'll say a little, thank you, everybody for attending. I get that this is, this can be a big change if this happens in your neighborhood. I also live in Ward three, so and I have a proposed development right behind my house. So I'm, you know, it's a different development, but similar feelings around changes really hard. But I, I think I do trust the process that I've heard happened 13 years ago and 2022. And and I also, I think councillor Jarrett said a lot of the things that I believe about housing and how we need to move forward with how we think about providing housing for more, for more people of different economic backgrounds. And so I think at this point, I don't feel like I would support the the proposed amendment.
Thanks, Stacy. Cameron.
Jeff. Yeah, I appreciate hearing everybody on on both sides of this room's thoughts and and feelings. But I'm going to agree with everyone that I've heard more recently on this side and not support the proposed legislative amendment tonight.
Thanks, and and we will make a formal motion, of course. I also would just like to say councillor Jarrett, I thought, you know, you, you just gave some really great points and I really appreciate that. And councillor Elkins, I agree with you that there may, that there probably are some tweaks to the side street district that the planning board might want to consider or at least I'm, I'm going to put forward that we consider, especially as, you know, a budding residential. I personally didn't like that you can put a six foot fence up and that reduces the buffer to 10 feet, for example. And I think, you know, I might also support a height restriction to match the budding zone possibly or with like a step back. So things like that, that we could do that would have an effect on the entire city. You know, I don't, I don't think for this proposal, though, I don't, I don't think changing the zoning back in in one parcel kind of affects the the change for the city that that we're looking for. So that's kind of where I'm at. So maybe we'll go back to.
Okay, so, so well, so I have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion for legislative matters, yes?
I just wanted to appreciate you councillor Elkins and member Tate, if we want to use formal. The that appreciate, and I think other people spoke to it too, the suggestion that we look at that interface and and make sure that, you know, that that we have that, because I agree, 70 feet and then little houses, that's, that's rough. So, but let's do that across the whole, all of the zones. I mean, the gateway is a different type of interface, but I think it might be worth looking at that. I don't think, do we have where central business core? I guess we can't talk to you right now, but then I'll put the question.
I'm staff technically, so I'm.
Where, do we have where central business core directly abuts a non-central business? Anyway, that's something to look at. So thank you for bringing that up and I look forward to that discussion.
Very good. All right. Well, if there's no more discussion on planning board, the motion is a ref recommend recommendation back to council, a negative recommendation. And so we need to do a roll call for this, right? Or no? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have no opposed, so we'll be reporting back that back to council.
Thank you. Yes, George.
Just want to emphasize too that, so I want to emphasize for the public that there will be another opportunity for public hearing when this goes to city council. Is that correct?
Well, it'll, it'll be voted on in public comment. It's not a hearing like this one, but yeah.
People will have a chance to comment on their their deliberation, so to speak.
Yes.
City council.
Thanks, George. So is there a motion to be made for a planning board? Sam, can you turn your mic on, please?
I move that we negatively that we would reject the proposal.
Okay, a motion for a negative recommendation.
Second.
Seconded by George. Show of hands? Okay, unanimous. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. I know these are difficult decisions and or and discussions. And and I am hopeful that you'll involve yourself when, as things go on. And if we get, you know, as we, if we revisit these things.
I move to close this joint meeting. Don't we have to?
Yeah.
We started.
Planning board?
Can we just adjourn legislative matters? Because planning board continues.
Yeah, the joint, the joint meeting, just the joint.
Well, so you guys don't need to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay.
Legislative matters.
All right, there's no discussion on adjournment, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. There's none opposed. We are legislative matters adjourned.